Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand with me for our invocation and our pledge.
(inaudible). And bow in, and let's do the group sound prayer. Amen.
Please drop in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's killing the roll, please?
Carrie Hart, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Connsmore, Ward 3.
Here.
Licksey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Yes.
Diane Tate, Ward 5. Lori Wood, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. First order of the evening is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our February 7th meeting. Council, you have had these well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any edits or corrections or additions, and if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those minutes are approved. We'll move on to a series of second reading of ordinances. Mr. Elliott, if you'll start us with those, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance amendment establishes a method as mandated by the Federal Highway Administration to maintain regulatory warning signs in our city as reference to retro-reflectivity. The manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices recommends five or six different methods. We've chosen the visual nighttime inspection method. It's the cheapest method. Yes, it calls for at least a 60-year-old or older individual with some training to drive around at night and look at signs. We're in the process right now of upgrading all of our signs in sectors in town, and we feel like this method is the cheapest, and we're doing them anyway. So, there have been no additions or deletions. It's for free. We recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Elliott on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Bobby, please.
Yes, sir. The Housing Authority has requested the city create a no parking zone on both sides of Thunkin Street between Tennessee Street and Stonewall. They've completely renovated these units, and they've made some off-street parking, and they've requested that this be declared no parking. We've looked at it. We concur. We recommend approval. There have been no additions or deletions. It's for free.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Elliott on this item? If there are none?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bobby. And Mr. Manino, you have the next one, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a second reading. As mentioned, there have been no additions or changes since the first reading. This is basically a housekeeping measure. Last August, we made some changes to the alcohol ordinance regarding identification and background check requirements for the licensee or applicant. And going back through the ordinance, we found that some of those similar requirements were also required of the contact person. So, just to make it the same throughout, we're going ahead and making these proposed changes to the ordinance, so it's consistent.
Okay. Questions for Randy on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Randy. Now, we do have a first reading of an ordinance. Mr. Reinhardt, if you'll get us on that.
Honorable Mayor and Council, in your July 19, 2012 council meeting, the council approved municipal court fines schedule based on recommendations from the committee formed to establish to revamp the fines schedule. After using the fines for several months, Judge White has asked the committee to revisit the schedule because he felt like that not all the crimes, not all the fines fits the crimes. I'm submitting to the council a revised municipal court fines schedule from Judge White, and he is agreeable to this. The schedules of fines is used by Judge White as a starting point, and the fines, the clients are based on what he feels that they can pay, what he uncovers during the trial.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this item?
I didn't ask you this, but it's kind of a good question. You might maybe take the next two weeks to think about it, but I know that when we first adjusted these, it was more of a innocent line without the community's judgment grade. Do you have any idea about the financial impact of this?
I've not gotten that far into it. I've been working on other things, but I will look at it, yes.
Thanks.
And I don't know if these are applicable in that same line, you kind of jog my memory on this, but, you know, in some instances, I know there were, after all the state fees and everything were applied, we're actually, basically, even though we're collecting fines, we were doing so at a loss after everything got paid out.
Correct.
If we need to verify that that's not going to be the case with any of these, that the judge is wanting us to adjust downward?
We will not. My understanding is that things will be left like they are as far as the fees and fines. The add-ons will be in addition to the base fines, so that the city will not be penalized at all like they were prior to the...
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick question that came up with me, and obviously, from the work session to now, is, do you have an idea of where these numbers came from? You know, they look just very erratic to me, but...
The original, I guess, schedule that was voted on back in July, it was something that Judge White and the committee came up with based largely on what Judge White recommended. When the committee was convened to revise these this couple of months ago, we did it based on what Judge White recommended as far as making the adjustments. And most of those, my recollection is, most of those fees and most of those fines were adjusted down.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but it's just, but it's just off of his knowledge. He's not pulling these numbers from any other city.
Based on, correct. Based on what he feels like the crime, the fine should be in line with what the crime was committed, and what the individual who basically has committed the crime, he feels like they can pay, justify with.
But you understand, these are, when you said base amounts, these be minimums, fine fees. You couldn't go below that, but on any ordinance violation of a city ordinance, bound up to $1,000. So, it's just state, but no, they decrease that as more than, whatever it is. I mean, he can go up to the maximum in his discretion. It's just that you're saying he can't go below this.
Right.
After you, you got the railroad crossing. Most times, the bells be ringing, and you look to the right, and there's nothing inside. You go through it while it's ringing, and it's super tough. That is a good thought.
Yes.
Probably imagine what it is.
Maybe.
All right. Any other questions regarding this first reading of the ordinance? We do have, we don't vote on this tonight, so we've got a couple of weeks to look and kind of review and revise. I know, the more I look at, the more questions I have, but we got a couple of weeks.
I just looked, I will contact Judge White to get some more clarification, and hopefully he'll reach out to the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Richard, you have the next three, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is needed to allow the release of a $10,000 lien for property at 11 Barrett Lane in Wingfoot Park subdivision. This lien was recorded in 2007. It's part of the First Time Home Buyers Forgivable Loan Program. That is a federal grant that the city received. Property owners have resided in the house for the required five-year period, and the loan may now be forgiven by approval of council. City Attorney's Office has reviewed the document, and staff recommends approval.
Question for Richard on this item, pretty straightforward. If there are no questions or discussion, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. This next item is needed to allow Tammy Berry to refinance a single-family home at 73 Mercer Lane in the Wingfoot Park subdivision. There is a second mortgage or subordinate loan, $10,000. What we just discussed, deed to secure debt and promissory note issued in 2010 to the city of Cartersville as part of the First Time Home Buyers to keep the first or prominent nature of the mortgage in place, then Mayor and Council need to approve the $10,000 to remain subordinate to the primary mortgage.
Okay. Any discussion? And if none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Richard.
Next item is related to redevelopment, and as such, this meeting serves as the required quarterly update. Mayor and Council serves as the local issuing authority for the urban redevelopment plan, and staff is required to give you all a quarterly update. Part of this is related to North Town. The first item at hand is the contract for a grant administrator. This contract would approve Gilbert and Associates as a program administrator to the North Town Residential Rehab Project for owner-occupied houses. This is, again, another federal grant that the city receives, and if approved, Rhonda Gilbert will interview various North Town property owners to determine interest and eligibility. We previously identified some properties, but there may be potentially new properties to look at, and this will be up to seven owner-occupied homes for approximately $10,000 per home. Improvements on things like roofwork, door improvement, windows. Later this year, the program administrator and staff will move forward with the actual work. It will be individual contracts, and so we look forward to getting the work done.
Questions or discussion on this item? If there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. In a brief note, if you will, please save the date for Saturday, April 20th at 11:00 a.m. There will be an Atco Cleanup and Neighborhood Day. This event will be held at Atco Baptist Church. There will be free lunch, free tree seedlings, free smoke detectors, and we've got some great partners. Keep Barto Beautiful, various city departments, Master Gardeners Group, and more information, including a press release, to follow.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, the next two, please. Actually, for those of you that have a copy of the agenda here, the item related to software maintenance, that is going to be removed from the agenda.
Yes, Mayor. The next item is the GMA Telecommunication Management Service Agreement. It's a $5,000 annual fee to GMA to help us with any telecommunications-related needs, like the franchise agreement with Comcast is one of those. I recommend approval of this invoice to pay for that service.
Any questions or discussion? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on.
The next one is intergovernmental agreement for the collection of ad lorum taxes for the city and the Cartersville school system as well. This is just the updated signature with the new county commissioner and county administrator. Keith, did have one change that's not in your packet. I recommend approval of this IGA with the updated contract or agreement that says, basically, had Keith added about liens, property liens, that makes sure the county reflects on those as well.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council. This is a user agreement with Georgia Highlands College. Our gymnastics tumbling team, the Flat Force Spooch Club, will be hosting USA Gymnastics Tumbling Meet at Georgia Highlands this Saturday, and we need a user agreement. Per the city attorney, and I spoke with the city clerk, we had to strike out the indemnification clause, and I've also spoken with Ms. Hula at Georgia Highlands, and they're okay with that. I recommend your approval of this user agreement.
Any questions, or if not, motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is fence fencing for our Dillinger Park pool that will be replaced. This is an item that is in our budget for the pool improvements at Dillinger Park, something that is the department's responsibility. I sent bids out, solicited bids, recommending the low bid from Carzville Fence, and I've got the wrong amount in your package, or the addition. My addition is wrong. The amount should be $11,168.18 as opposed to what I have in there, but that is Carzville Fence, the low bid for the installation and the demolition of the existing fence. All e-verify and save documents are in hand, and I recommend approval of this purchase.
Any questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This also is a bid award for electric supply components for, again, Dillinger Park upgrades to the office and the pool. I recommend the low bid from City Electric Supply, an amount of $3,815.19 for Group 1, which is the panels and the breakers and stuff. Also for Group 3, which is all the wiring, at $1,166.61.46 for a total amount from City Electric Supply of $5,476.65. Again, this is budgeted, and our Dillinger Park improvements have all e-verified documentations, and I recommend approval of the low bid.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Greg, I didn't have a chance to ask you. Did you get a driver's license test taken the other day?
No, Sir, I did not.
I'm sorry.
You have the right documentation when you go up there, so...
I had mine.
Bobby, next item, please.
They will turn you away if you don't have the correct documentation, trust me. Took my daughter the other day. We have the need to order 200 more recycling containers, the 35-gallon containers. We solicited three bid proposals. We got two back. The low bid was our original low bidder of Auto USA. He bid $37 each. Consolidated disposal bid $42.95 each. The low bid, $37 each plus freight, equals $8,050. We recommend the low bid. This is a budgeted item. E-verify and save documentation is attached. Presently, we have 1,560 participants in our recycling program.
Much better than we anticipated.
Yes.
Any comments, questions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bobby. Chief Carter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here within the city of Cartersville, we have 10 warning sirens that are spread throughout the jurisdiction. Each one of these warning sirens, as you see, they have approximately six to nine different speakers that are attached that make part of that system. We have discovered through our maintenance that we have 13 speaker drivers, so individually we have 13 speakers that are bad, affecting approximately five poles within the 10. In order to repair these speakers and replace these drivers, the work would need to be done by McCord Communications located in Anniston, Alabama. They're a single-source provider for us as far as the repair of our sirens. They also do Borto Counties and Cobb's. The total bid or price to the repair of the warning sirens is $16,537.72. We respectfully request approval to make these repairs. All e-verify and save documents are in hand and on file.
Any questions for the chief on this item? If not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Connie, who'd you have with the motion on that one? Who do you have on the second? It's curious. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the Municipal Court is in need of some renovation, some, basically, add more space to it. While discussing the renovations with Georgia Department of Corrections, we come across an issue with some asbestos floor tile. They will now need to be removed before that work can be done. I contacted three asbestos abatement vendors, asked them to submit a proposal, and received two back. The low bid is from Southern Environmental Services Incorporated, priced at $5,610. Includes the EPD permitting, asbestos removal, the removal of the walls and judgments that are currently on top of the floor tile, and some third-party air quality testing. I recommend the bid be awarded to the low bid of Southern Environmental Incorporated for $5,610. All e-verified documents are on file.
Any questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this item? And if not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, Mayor, is a heavy-duty lift for our garage for help with all our city vehicles, particularly the larger ones. The garage personnel, Bill Trot, our supervisors, in the audience tonight, has him and his staff evaluate the bids that we received on these mobile lifts, and recommend the bid from Reliable in the amount of $52,980 for six vehicle lifts.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? More questions for Mr. Porter?
Hey, we talked about this a little bit in work session, but I failed to ask a question earlier. It states on here that we've got part of that was budgeted, and the other part comes out of a workers' compensation safety fund? How's that replenished?
Actually, every year, our fund is replenished every year. I was just looking at this. The garage is supported by all the departments, and there's money in there to pay for it, but I kind of use this as a safety issue item as well. As you saw with the pictures, it's a major concern. The Workers' Comp Safety Fund has sufficient funds to cover our catastrophic losses for a couple years, depending on the number of claims we have.
Okay. Any other questions? And if not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Grove?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an important economic development tool that the city has been working on for a couple of years. One of the council's priorities. This will move the tax paid on inventory by industry from 40 to, or the free board, the exemption from 40 to 60 percent starting January of 2014. School Board's already acted on it, indicating that it was fine with them, so it's recommended for you to approve.
When will it get to 100 percent? 16?
The plan would be, well, yeah, because it would go to 80 in '15, and then, yeah.
23 years.
But I can tell you that the fact that we're on that schedule, and that it's known by the state economic developers, that the fact that we're simply on that track, even though we're not 200, the fact that we're heading there, that is benefiting us. Because if somebody were, say, to announce, it goes by where you are on January 1st, so theoretically, if somebody were to sign up with us today, they might not start construction for six months. If construction takes more than a year, then...
90 percent?
Yeah. So, is that right, Mr. Archer?
Yeah. Thank you. It's one of the first questions, the economic industrial prospects in particular, I ask. And if you don't have it at all, they don't even come see you.
Well, and I think it is important to note that there were other cities that had decided just to do it without the input of the school board, and go from, you know, just basically do it without their thought, consideration, or approval, and go from, you know, from 20 to 100. You know, we've talked about this in concert with the school system for a number of years, and doing it incrementally, and having them sign off on a resolution prior to us approving it, I think it speaks a lot for both organizations. So, there you go. If there's any other questions, and if not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a time change for Civic Youth Day.
Yeah, this moves the, we have one of, two meetings a year that are morning meetings. This is the one, and the other one is the one that conflicts with the Christmas parade. This is to allow Civic Youth Day activities, and it's coming up on us rather quickly. It's the only date that we could really find to coordinate with schools and the county. That will be March 21st, so next month. I recommend you approve it so that we can hold the meeting at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We do have an item to add to the agenda before the financial report. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added. Mr. Mullenax.
Hey, Council, we have an ongoing project that's the Etowah River Emergency Pump Station intake piping. During construction work, we evaluated the existing 48-inch steel casing pipe that was installed under a previous contract for structural integrity. This determination has come back that the casing is possibly, has too thin of a wall to provide the stability we need, so the contractor has given us a price for installing a thicker-walled casing to give us the safety factor we need on this. He submitted pricing for labor and materials. Additionally, the engineers have recommended that we increase some of the suction piping size from 16-inch diameter to 24. The contractor is just marking up the cost of the materials on that. The total of all these items comes to $99,863. We feel this is a very reasonable price. It compares favorably with the initial installation of the casing pipe. One item, we will be able to salvage the old casing pipe, which has a value of about $25,000. This project is bond-funded. The original contract amount was $508,300, and we have the e-verify and save documentation from the original contract bid.
Questions on this item? And if there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And now our financial report. Mr. Reinhardt.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the December 2012 and comparing it to December 2011. In the general fund, revenues decreased over last year by a million dollars. This is due to the school bond paying off in fiscal year 2012. Expenses have also decreased by $800,000. This, again, is due to the school bond being paid off, coupled with the increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased JDA debt payment. Three years of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis are the local ops and sales tax. We've got a decrease in that of $198,000. Police fines and full furtors, we have an increase of $107,000, and billing permits and inspection fees, a decrease of nearly $6,000. In Water and Sewer Fund, revenues have increased over last year by $142,000. Expenses have increased by $730,000. This increase is due mainly to increased debt service expenses and increased capital expenses. In the Gas Fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $1.2 million. Expenses have decreased by $1.45 million. This is due mainly to the decreased cost of purchased gas. In the Electric Fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $400,000, I'm sorry, $406,000. I'm sorry, $400,000, my mistake. Expenses have increased by $105,000, and this increase is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased cost of purchased electricity. In the Stormwater Fund, revenues have increased from last year by $20,000. In the stormwater fund, revenues have increased from last year by $23,000, while expenses have increased by $234,000. This large increase in expenses is due to the increase in operating expenses and increase in capital expenses. Remember, a month or so ago, we purchased two houses, and we were waiting for the rework to become to us from the grant. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased from December 2011 by $84,000. Expenses have increased by $439,000. This increase is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the fire graphics fund, revenues have increased from December 2011 by $18,000. Expenses have increased by $114,000, and this is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. That is my report for the financial side. I do have a side note. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we talked about the impact fees and the need for those to be spent in this fiscal year. There's roughly $303,700 left in the impact fees that are unspent. They need to be basically done away with or spent this year. If you remember, in the current year's budget, we have $150,000 allocated, $110,000 of that is allocated for the purchase of the fire trucks that occurred last year. The other $40,000 is allocated for the recreational trail that are being built now. That roughly leaves $153,000 and some change. I would like to go ahead and expend those by the following. Transferring $36,935.21 to the general fund. This will be used for the cost of the fire trucks that were purchased last year, or $7,400 and some change. An additional $9,400 to be used for the cost of the recreational trail system, and $20,000 for administration fees. The remaining amount will be broken down and expended into, by the following. Transferring $85,694.34 into the SPOSS 2007 Fund to offset the cost of the new police building, and $31,039.18 to be reimbursing the SPOSS 2003 Fund to offset the cost of the Dorset Ferry Road widening, which has been ongoing for several years. All these above projects were approved in the original impact fee documentation and have been approved and deemed as qualified expenses for the use of the impact fees. The impact fee ordinance will be left intact in case the council wants to bring it back at a later point in time.
Okay, and the whole purpose in getting rid of those funds by the end of this fiscal year is that you would be able to do away with impact fees as opposed to having them rolled back to zero?
Correct.
And would, I guess, would there be quarterly reports and things that you don't have to do to maintain?
There's also a six-year time limit on it also, and we are approaching the end of that six-year time period. The impact fees were actually started collecting in January of 2007.
Okay, and that recommendation, that doesn't require a motion or anything?
Well, actually, we were talking about that. Probably the thing to do is stick it in the form of resolution, have them approve that.
Okay.
But just out of pure curiosity, the $9,433.59 that we're moving to the recreational trail system?
Yes.
I thought the trail systems were mainly funded by grants.
They are, but in the event of the impact fee, there were, monies were set aside in the impact fee when the impact fee was originally conveyed, I guess you could say, for monies to be applied or to help funding the trail projects.
So, we can use it that way, is what you're saying?
You have, it's almost like a, well, I understand, it's almost like a SPOSS thing. When the impact fees were gathered, that was one of the specific reasons why they were gathered, so you have to expend them in that same area.
I understand. I was under the impression, because it was grant or SPOSS, you couldn't include impact, so I understand.
They are grants, but all of those are in matches.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Tom on the financial report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? I'll just very quickly say, city visioning is tomorrow, 8:30 at our lovely new public safety building. If you didn't get the memo, the order of the day is casual. Dress comfortably as we get that work done. Council will be meeting, these are public meetings, by the way, taking place Friday and Saturday morning. And Sammy will not be able to wear your Indiana-stripped warm-up pants, candy strippers. And then the public safety groundbreaking is going to be a week from today at 4:00, correct?
Public Safety Headquarters, 4:00, Station 4, and then the O.K.'s at 2:00.
There you go. Thank you. If there's no other business?
Well, I would like to, I was told today that I needed to make an announcement. The Carsville Celebrity Dancing with the Stars is March 2nd, which it happens to be after, it'll be before we meet again. It's at the Clarence Brown Center, and there's 11 celebrities dancing with 11 professional dancers. And dinner's at 6:00, and the dancing starts at 7:00. There'll be two winners. One would be the most popular, which basically you get a dollar of votes, so the person with the most donated money. And then the other is who dances the best that night with their partner. This is the benefit, the homeless shelter and backpack buddies. So, if you're not doing anything on March 2nd...
Do you want anybody that's going to be dancing in that competition?
Well, I was about to say, if you don't have anything else to do on March 2nd, it's only $10 for a ticket, and you can come watch me dance. I don't know when I get to dance, but it'll be sometime that night.
Who designated you as a celebrity?
I asked that question when they were sitting in my office as well, so. Two great organizations, so. And I think projected to raise about $60,000, so that's pretty good.
Wonderful. All right. Anything else?
Nothing else. I'd make motion to adjourn.
All right, got a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned. You can get a rump out of that guy.